Breakout groups. It's an absolute delight to welcome her back to the stage. I think the true measure of when you've become globally famous is when someone can just say your first name and we all know exactly who you are. So Arianna is going to be coming back up on stage. She's doing so much amazing stuff. Every time I listen to her speak or meet with her, she comes out with another wonderful way of summing up the issues and challenges facing us in the world. And the most recent of those was when she talked about how we are burning out ourselves and burning up the planet. And she's here to talk to us about the third metric. So Arianna.
So how many people here are feeling tired, sleep deprived, exhausted, burned out? Come on, raise your hand and be truthful. Okay, I'm going to talk to you about why it is incredibly important that while you go out and change the world, you take care of yourself, of your human capital, so that you are not sleep deprived, exhausted and burned out. We've heard so much about the sustainability of the planet, but we've heard very little about the sustainability of individual lives. We are leading lives that are not sustainable. Burnout is the disease of civilization. And burned out people are going to keep burning up the planet. So as you're redefining leadership, I want you to also look at redefining success. Success at the moment is defined in terms of two metrics. And don't worry about taking pictures. Put your cell phones down. There are going to be tons of pictures and I'll take pictures with anybody you want afterwards. But you know what? Multitasking is a disease. I'm here to celebrate. I'm here to celebrate unitasking, giving your full attention to something. Miracles happen when we give our full attention to something. The people who are going to change the world are the people who are going to give their full attention to whatever they are doing. Multitasking is actually an illusion. New scientific findings are finding that it doesn't exist. It's called task switching. You're just switching tasks and it's the most stressful thing you can do. So back to burnout and success. Success is defined now in terms of money and power. Defining success just in terms of money and power is like a two-legged stool. And you see a lot of very successful people toppling over and falling off. That's why I want to talk to you about the third metric of success. The third metric consists of four things. The first is our own sense of well-being, our own sense of health and wellness. If you're not feeling that, you're going to operate from a place of burnout. You're not going to be as effective, as creative, as productive. And we women are paying a heavier price for stress. There's new data that shows that women in stressful, successful jobs have a 40% greater incidence of heart attacks or any kind of heart disease and a 60% greater incidence of diabetes. Because you guys can deal with stress much better. You can go watch a football game and forget it, where women kind of wrestle it into the ground. So well-being is the number one thing. And if you go into any corporation now, with a few exceptions of some pioneering corporations, you see people burnt out, exhausted, and as a result, making terrible decisions. And that brings me to the second part of the third metric, wisdom. The fact that we have so many leaders in politics, in media, in business, making bad decisions is not because they are not smart. They have very high IQs, they have great degrees, but they are not wise. And wisdom is not chronological. You guys have much more wisdom than most of the leaders of the world. Because look at the mess they're creating. So I think they should all have a very good nap. In fact, like, look at David. He's having a nap, he's listening. The only thing you're allowed to do now is having a nap. If you are really tired and you want to ignore me, you can have a nap. You just can't look at your iPhones. So the third part of the third metric is wonder. You know, we've lost our capacity to wonder, to celebrate. We are missing the moment. You look, you walk down these beautiful streets and you see people on their iPhones with their iPods in their ears. Is anybody present? Is anybody really living their lives right now? So remember, don't miss the moment. Because a lot of the anxiety that we have is because we're either living in the past, reliving our mistakes, or we're living in the future, anxious about what is going to happen. The only thing we have is right now. Own it, be fully present. And from that place comes an amazing sense of trust in the universe. Rumi, one of my favorite poets, said, "Trust that life is rigged in your favor. Live life as though it's rigged in your favor. No self-pity, no fear." Fearlessness is not the absence of fear. It's simply going ahead despite your fears. And then you build the fearlessness muscles. It is so interesting having Anthony Jenkins here because I have this amazing warmth for Barclays Bank because at the darkest moment in my life, when I was living in London in my twenties and had written a book that was rejected by 36 publishers. Just imagine getting 36 rejections, one after the other, after the other. I had run out of money and I was walking down St. James's Street, feeling rather depressed and wondering whether I should choose a different career. And I saw Barclays Bank and I walked in and armed with nothing but a lot of Greek chutzpah. I asked to see the bank manager and I asked for a loan. I had nothing. But for some reason, the bank manager gave me a loan. And that literally changed my life. It made it possible for me to hold it together for another 13 rejections until finally a publisher published the book. And for me, this is really a sign that we all have in our lives. If you look back at your life, you will find moments like that when everything seemed really dark. It's a little bit like reading a fairy tale when the hero or the heroine is lost in a dark forest and then suddenly the helpful animals come out and help them find their way out of the forest. Well, in our own lives, there are helpful animals disguised as human beings, as bank managers, as one Young World counselors, as David Jones, whatever, who are there to help you get where you want to go. Trust that and be alert enough to notice them. Because very often, if we are operating from burnout, exhaustion, sleep deprivation, you may miss them. And that's why it's so important to keep track of your own human capital. And the final, the fourth part of the third metric is giving. Because there is now again incredible neuroscientific evidence that shows that giving leads to well-being. It gives you that sense of abundance. Because whenever we are striving and we are going to be striving to get what we want, we are sometimes feeling a sense of lack. But in fact, inside us is huge abundance. And when we give, we feel abundant. We connect with the abundance inside us. Because I believe in two fundamental truths. The one is that each one of us has that place of wisdom, strength, compassion and peace inside us. Every religion, whether you are Christian, Muslim, Jew, Hindu, Buddhist, anything, every religion has said the same thing, that we all have that place in us. But most of the time, we don't live there. So how can we quickly veer back into that place? How can we quickly course correct? At the Huffington Post, we've even launched a nap for that. Yes, there is a nap for that. And we call it GPS for the soul. You can download it free from iTunes. And basically, it gives you a proxy for your stress level, your heart rate variability. And then you launch your own guide with all the things that help you get to that centered place. It could be pictures of your loved ones. It could be pictures of your pets. It could be landscapes, breathing exercises, whatever it is. The key is to keep connecting to our essence again and again and again. And you know what? If you look around, a lot of the super-successful people do that. We just don't hear a lot about it. Steve Jobs told his biographer that some of his best ideas, the ones that led to the most iconic Apple products, came after Zen meditation. Whatever it is, you know, some of you pray, some meditate, some go for a walk in the forest. It doesn't matter. Just find that place of stillness and strength inside you. Because from that place, you're so powerful that no obstacles can stand in your way. And do you know, it hasn't really been widely reported, what Steve Jobs asked for the last thing to be given out to his friends at his memorial. Everyone leaving the memorial was given a brown box. Do you know what was inside the brown box? It wasn't the latest, better version of the iPhone. It was the book that changed his life, The Autobiography of a Yogi. That was the book that connected him with his own essence. Each one of us will have our own individual journey. The important thing is to remember that journey. Because if we forget it, then we're going to fall back on the culture's definition of success, of climbing the ladder, a definition that actually was created by men. I'm sorry, guys. Not you, you're too young to have created it, but you have inherited it. But men of my generation have built this world and it is not working. It is not working for men. It is not working for women. It is not working for polar bears. And the world that men have created is based on these mature values of ruthlessness, aggressiveness, trampling on anybody to get ahead. You go into many corporate offices and you have this war language. "We're killing it, we're crushing it." But the future needs feminine values. Now, you guys don't worry. Men and women have feminine values. It's just that we now need to own them and we need to express them. Values of compassion, nurturing, caring, creativity. All these values that we have associated with women, with soft power, are the values of the present and the future. And you see increasingly, corporations, businesses that are using them are more successful because they're tapping into the zeitgeist. There is such a thing as a zeitgeist, the spirit of the age. And the spirit of the age now is about meaning and collaboration. It's not just about survival and competition. And we're here in the land of the most amazing animals. And my favorite animal, that is actually my screensaver, is the gazelle. Let me tell you why. Because the gazelle runs like crazy if there is danger. But when the leopard or the lion goes, the gazelle just grazes. And we human beings are in a perpetual fight or flight mode. We need to learn to unplug, recharge and renew ourselves. And you know how they say that when we are changing habits, you got to find what they call the keystone habit to change? One habit, something. For me, just to tell you something about myself, in 2007, in the middle of building the Huffington Post, I fainted from exhaustion. I hit my head on my desk. I broke my cheekbone. I got four stitches on my right eye. That was the beginning of my journey. But you don't have to wait until you have a rude awakening like I had. But that was when I rediscovered sleep. That was my keystone habit change. From sleeping for four hours a night, I started sleeping seven or eight hours a night. And you know what? This have been my best years. I have been more productive, more creative, less reactive. And so now, I want to recommend to everybody here that they sleep their way to the top. You know all these cliches? You know, sleep is just for losers. I'll sleep when I die. Forget them. Sleep deprivation is for losers. Because sleep deprived people make the wrong decisions. They miss the whispers, they miss the signs, they miss the red flags. You know the days when you are just waking up and you are feeling really great? You can deal with anything. Because there will never be a day when everything goes your way. Let me break the news to you. You know, no matter how successful you become and how many amazing businesses you build and how many nonprofits you build, things are always going to be challenges. But how do we lead our lives so that we move from struggle to grace? Instead of constantly feeling that we're struggling, moving to the place where we can embrace whatever life brings us, deal with it and transform it. And you know, you are truly the critical mass that's going to change the world. We have not reached the full tipping point. We don't know how many more young leaders we need to get to that tipping point. But every time another young leader is added, we may be getting closer to that critical mass that actually will transform the world. Because that's when miracles happen, when suddenly change becomes almost like a positive epidemic spreading around the world. And that sense of optimism that you're all conveying because of what you are doing becomes truly infectious. And that's why we can never let our own fears and our own negative self-talk get in the way. I call that negative self-talk the obnoxious roommate living in my head. It's the voice that puts me down, that tells me I'm not good enough or smart enough. We all have that voice. Again, women are more susceptible to it. But we can learn to just smile at that voice and not take it seriously. For those of you who know Stephen Colbert, I said to him when on his show recently that, I said, "Stephen, my voice sounds exactly like you." You know, sarcastic, sardonic. And he said to me, "I had to find a place to crash." The point is, we don't have to listen to these voices. We are bigger than these voices. And in fact, the French philosopher Montaigne said, "There were many terrible things in my life, but most of them never happened." And remember that when you move into anxiety. Every day, I practice gratitude hundreds of times a day. Because that moves me from struggle to grace. Gratitude about every little thing and about the big things. Gratitude that is bigger than the obstacles and the challenges. And I've met a few of you today and I wish I could meet all of you because everybody I've met has been amazing. And I wish we could have more time to interact. But I want to leave a little time for questions. If we keep them short, then we'll be able to take more people. And also, I want to let you know that this is just the beginning of our relationship. I want us to continue this relationship on the Huffington Post. I want to help make your dreams come true. I feel that the thing that I... For me, creating the Huffington Post has been amazing in many ways. You know, building a great journalistic enterprise, winning a Pulitzer, being in 10 countries now. But the most important thing is that we've built a powerful platform that can turbocharge whatever it is that you believe in, that you are doing, that can suddenly spread it around the world. That for me is the most magical thing. When we have someone posting a blog on their own site, it happened recently, a mother, she posted a blog about the day she stopped saying hurry up to your child. You know how everybody's about hurry up, hurry up, hurry up? And she stopped saying that. And we say that to ourselves. So we posted that on the Huffington Post and it suddenly had over a million likes and 7 million page views, et cetera. And she got a book deal and I love that. Because that for me is the power of the platform. And you know what? I'm impatient about change. I want us to scale all the good things happening. I want us to turbocharge all the good things happening. And that's why, let me just end before we go to questions by saying, find that place inside you. Archimedes, the Greek philosopher, said, "Give me a place to stand and I can move the world." So find that place of strength, of peace, of compassion. And from that place, redefine leadership, redefine success and make the world in your own image so that all of us, men and women, can live with more grace, more empathy and yes, more sleep. Thank you.
That was amazing. And we're very lucky that Arianna will take a few questions. We probably only got time for about five or six. So why don't we try and get through the two microphones here? And the shorter the question is, the more we can hear from Arianna.
Hi, my name is Adriana Matteo. I'm a violinist and singer. I perform with DJ Spooky. Actually, we were recently on the Huffington Post. I'm also here on behalf of the World Peace Orchestra. Females in music, singer-songwriters in particular, we're given license to express our opinions. We're always, it's necessary for us to connect to ourselves and to express ourselves and sometimes even invite criticism in doing so. Now, Ms. Huffington, as a very public female figure in the press, how do you connect yourself, remain human, balance asserting your views and supporting issues that are important to you? Feminism, other controversial issues? How do you do this while maintaining the neutrality required of your position in the press? Thank you.
Okay, well, that's a great question. And basically, the key here is not to take internalized negative opinions. There may be people who don't like what you're doing. You know, there may be people who criticize what you're doing. As long as you are clear about what you're doing and taking feedback, if it helps you course correct, but as long as you're clear, just stay on course. And that for me is a key. And also, don't worry about failure. You know, my mother used to say, "Failure is not the opposite of success. It's a stepping stone to success."
Um, sorry, microphone in the back.
Hello, Arianna. Another delegate here with a lovely Greek accent. I'm Arianna. I want to thank you first of all about your comment on sleep because I love to sleep. And up until now, I was thinking that this derived from the stereotype that Greeks are lazy. So thank you for tearing that meat down. We're not.
That's great. And you know what? The Greek joy, you know, the Greek joy absorbed by the Greek, that's really something that we can all aspire to. And it's easier to be joyful when you are rested and renewed.
Thank you. So what my question was about is to point out one statistic. 64.9% youth unemployment right now. How do you advise people with struck by unemployment or economic crises like Greece actually become a success story with self-employment like you did?
Well, two things. First of all, as we said on the panel earlier, governments have a big responsibility. And the Greek government needs to move away from austerity policies and really move to growth policies that will bring more jobs to young people. That's absolutely key. And very quickly, you know, my own story. My father actually went bankrupt. And my mother cut everything, everything. You know, my sister is here with me and she can tell you the stories. But the one thing she didn't cut is her children's education. Because she felt that that was really what we owe the next generation. You know, she didn't mind having two dresses only and nothing else. But we can't take it out on the new generation. But in the meantime also, we should look at what is it that we love? What are our own skills? Who do we want to help? And even if it doesn't pay at the beginning, let's always be doing something that's helping others. And magic, miracles happen during that process. The worst thing is to just stay inactive and move into self-pity and anger. So for me, whatever it is that you are moved to do, even if you can make one life a little easier, it's a step towards that journey of real success.
Microphone at the front and then microphone behind, but keep them really, really short.
Hi, Arianna. I'm Kathleen from the United Kingdom. Your comment about burnout struck a chord with me as that's something I've been talking with my colleagues a lot lately. And I wanted to know if you had one piece of advice for us to bring this conversation to the leaders of our organization to change how they measure our performance and our success? What would that be?
Well, first of all, you know, there are already major corporations. In the States, for example, 25% of corporations have introduced some form of renewal and mindfulness program. I don't mean just Google, but General Mills, Aetna, Target. And in the UK, you know, you have, we just were there recently. We did a third metric conference. And we met with a lot of corporate leaders who are actually beginning to practice what we're discussing here. Because you know what? They're saving money. Even if they didn't care for their employees, businesses are losing hundreds of billions of dollars now because of stress, because of depression, because of absenteeism. So if they can help their employees' well-being, they're actually going to be able to see the impact on the bottom line as well. And just show them the data. We have masses of staff sections on the Huffington Post, a third metric section that will give you all the data that this is in their own self-interest.
Fantastic. Microphone in the back.
My name is Via. I am from Lithuania. First time representing this country in One Young World. And I would like to thank you very much for bringing this topic in such an intense environment where we have more than 1,000 of people. And my question would be, we still have some time to go in this summit. What would be your piece of advice apart from sleep and apart from taking away the smartphones? What would be your piece of advice? How can we make the most out of the rest of our time here?
Well, I think the great thing here, and that's what I love about David and Kate, they're present here. You know, so often you go to conferences and the organizers are never in the room. Because they're sort of in the back room doing their business on their email. You know, 75% of your emails are useless. Right?
More than that, actually.
David says more than that. For me, that truly, that's a great example. It's like, the more present you are here, amazing things are happening. But so often, we miss them because we think we have to catch up with something else. And we're always catching up with something else and missing the moment. And also, you know, the bit about our relationship with technology is very important here. You are the most connected generation and that's absolutely wonderful. But it's also incredibly dangerous. Because technology is addictive. Talk to anybody who makes this stuff. They will tell you, they make it deliberately addictive. It's not accidentally addictive, it's deliberately addictive. So you need to learn how to disconnect from your technologies. So you need to learn how to disconnect from your technologies and reconnect with yourselves. Because you know what? The wisdom, the creativity, the big ideas are not going to come from looking at your smartphones, I promise you. So they're only going to come if you're looking at the Huffington Post, that's a different story.
So we probably have time for one more question?
Okay, great.
Hi, you've really hit on my passion here. I was 28 when I had my first burnout, 28. And the thing that rescued me, sorry, is working with horses. Because they are exactly what you say, they live in the present. They will run from danger, but they will live in the present, and they are authentic. Sorry. I still work in the corporate world...
Never say "sorry" for being authentic.
You have to cry a lot more than that to catch the grass by yesterday.
I still work in the corporate world, and I'm passionate about restoring heart and authenticity to the corporate world. And the horses, at the moment, are a separate part of that in my life. I will bring them together some. But my question to you is, I often work with young people with horses, and they're very driven by wanting to be famous, or wanting to achieve success through money, and have designer handbags, and big houses, and look the part. And I'd really like to know, how do we instill these values in our young, so that we don't get to 28? I mean, I'm not, you know, I was driving for money and success, and a male idea of what is success, and I hit 28, and if I hadn't come across the horses, I think I'd be...
Ariana.
Well, the great thing right now is that we have a lot of evidence around us that money and fame by themselves do not give fulfillment and happiness. There's so much overwhelming evidence. Nothing against money and fame, we're not criticizing them, we're just saying they're not enough. They can't be the whole story. And the truth is that, when you look around, there's so much that's changing, we just need to get to the tipping point. I mean, at the Huffington Post, for example, we have introduced naprooms. So people, if they are tired in the middle of the afternoon, instead of having a fifth cup of coffee, or a six cinnamon bun, they can go have a nap. I must say, the other day, I was walking by one of the naprooms, and I saw two people coming out of it. But you know, I thought to myself, you know, whatever it takes to recharge you.
Now, Ariana, your sister has the power of veto, and said, "I have to take one more question." So this is the very last question.
Hey, Ariana, I'm Greg Krik, filmmaker, passionate about social justice, from South Africa. And my question is, our generation as storytellers, creative professionals, and media professionals, how do you think we can use that platform more effectively to bring about positive social change?
Well, really, that is the key. Storytelling is such a key. When you touch people's hearts, that's when the real change happens. And now, that's really what is amazing. We have so many ways to get your videos, your little films, your vines, your anything, we can get them out there so much faster, and in such an incredible way, that we don't have to audition anymore. You don't have to own the printing presses. You just have to have a good idea and stay on it until it's executed.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
You were amazing. Thank you so much. That was unbelievable. Thank you so much. A huge round of applause for Ariana. Okay, so before we break for lunch, let me tell you about the breakouts that are happening in and around Johannesburg this afternoon. You've already registered for which session you want to go to. Here they are on...